Teachers that are retiring with us tonight as guests. I have a special presentation for them. So. Guess with that, we'll. Move on to item number two, Tom.
Sure, just I just want to.
I'm sorry.
Make sure we didn't. Pledge and public comment.
Right. Okay, we do we have a flag?
People can salute to the flag in their home, I guess.
Yeah, okay, well, let's do that since we're not doing that. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Sorry about that. Um. So I'm not aware of anything that we have for public comment tonight.
Correct, people had the opportunity to submit by noon today, and there was nothing submitted.
Okay, all right, and I mentioned our visitors, so that's.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could you tell us, I don't have a screen that shows everybody, so could you just tell the board members that are present, please?
Sure, there's you, Marcia, obviously. Mr. Jones is here, Ms. Kelly is here. Just scrolling through the list, Ms. Goggins is here. Ms. Divine, Ms. Fedor, and that seems to be it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
I do believe, if you didn't say it, Board Member Greg Manoya is also online.
Oh, okay, sorry.
In there.
And Amanda. She's on mute.
I didn't see her on my list, I'm sorry. Yeah, I still don't. Oh, okay, that must be A's phone. Okay. Item number two, Tom.
Sure. Special night ahead, albeit strange circumstances continue, but as a district and as a board, if you haven't muted yourself, please do, so with this amount of people online, it would be helpful if people were muted. We wanted to take some time tonight as a district, and certainly the Board of Ed as well, to honor our retirees for the 1920 school year. Obviously, current conditions prevented us from having our normal festivities, but as a district and as a board of ed, we felt it was important to honor our retirees at a public event. And we knew they'll, most of our retirees have used Zoom regularly this spring, so we knew they could get on to this meeting. And each of our principals or directors have prepared a few words about each of our retirees. We have a brief biography of each retiree's career that we're going to put up and have some words from each of our principals or directors about. And I know the board has a gift for each retiree that we'll be mailing to their homes. And we're going to start with Waterford High School. And you should all see a screen share of this year's retirees. So I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Hauser at this point.
Thank you Superintendent Giard. Now, one of the highlights for me every spring is getting to give a send-off to all of our retiring teachers and staff members at an end-of-the-year get-together. Obviously, we missed that this year, so I don't get to publicly praise Lynn to her peers, but I guess a Board of Ed meeting is an excellent opportunity as well. And I've got to say, Lynn is a teacher like no other. There is nobody quite like Lynn Clorzik. She has the biggest heart of any teacher I think I've ever worked with. She has run our Sunshine Fund, which is that organization that sends flowers, cards, well wishes to any teacher or staff member who might need it. And she's been running that for well over a decade of the 13 years she's been here at Waterford High. And we sometimes joke, when you say the word sunshine, you think of Lynn Clorzik. But that is absolutely true. She loves kids with a passion. She thinks of them as her own. She talks to them about her own kids. And her goal really is a simple, but huge goal. She wants to prepare them for everything that life might throw at them other than the classroom stuff. She's been teaching child development classes. She's been teaching an independent living class, which really teaches seniors how to become adults. And one thing that I've always looked forward to in that class is my annual tie-tying lesson. She makes me come in a week before graduation to teach the senior boys how to tie ties, because that's a grown-up skill that they need at graduation, and it got to look sharp. And I can tell you, if any of you have ever met Lynn and talked with Lynn, a conversation with Lynn can go anywhere. You have no idea where it will end based on where it starts, but there is one thing you can be sure of, and the one thing we will always miss about Lynn is that when that conversation's over, you're going to be walking away with a huge smile on your face, because she is just that positive a person. So Lynn Clorzik, we're all going to miss you. Thank you for your many years of service to the kids here in Waterford.
Congratulations, Lynn.
Our next up, I did get to praise and to some extent roast at faculty event, because he retired over the winter. That's Stephen Anino. He's a special ed teacher who came to us from another school system and has spent 12 years at Waterford Public Schools. I believe a semester at Clark Lane, and then 11 and a half years at Waterford High School. And Steve is a guy who is every student's, for lack of a better way to put it, he's the friend they need, even though they may not realize how much they need him. Steve is one of the best allies for kids I've worked with. He's the guy who's got a gift for telling it like it is in a way that kids will hear it, parents will hear it, other teachers and administrators will hear it and understand that no matter what he has to say, it's coming from the heart and it's coming from a genuine passion for meeting the needs of his special education students and saying it in a way that it will get heard and it will get understood and it will get valued. In addition to being an extraordinary special education teacher, I believe in his time with us, he has brought every single student who expressed any interest in a trade whatsoever on a career and technical field trip to some sort of job placement or job training program. And he revived our ski club and turned it into one of the must-do events of the winter for a lot of students. And that is another area that he's passionate, so much so that the last ski trip he chaperoned for us was a month after his retirement. And the idea that a teacher is still that interested and that vested in his students, that he's showing up to work a month after retirement, is tremendous. Steve has already gone on to new and different things, but I can tell you, we've missed him in the semester that he's been gone. He was a great member of the faculty.
Congratulations, Steve.
Karen McBride is another one who left us this year after tremendous service. She did leave mid-year as well, so we had a retirement party for her that it's a real testament to her to see how many staff members, how many family members, and how many years, I mean, and how many former students showed up to wish farewell to our longtime attendance secretary. That information, you see there, 28.5 years of service in Waterford Public Schools. 23 and a half of those years, she served as the attendance secretary. She served in that role so long that it changed title twice during her tenure there. And when I think about her, there were really three things that sum her up. She was our information clerk, she was our attendance secretary, but more than that, she was our school's grandma. She literally had her grandchildren come through the school in my time there. But seeing the way she worked with kids, the kids who are coming in late, the kids who are leaving early, tend to be the ones who need a little bit of TLC, a little bit of somebody to just give them that minute and give them their ear. And that was Karen. That was her specialty. She had a smile, she had this trademark chuckle and a word of encouragement or advice for every kid who was at that attendance window. And she was a tremendous, tremendous member of the school community who is greatly missed. So congratulations, Karen, on your years of service as well.
And we have one more from the high school, and then after that, we'll give any of the retirees from the high school a chance to say a few words.
All right, and our last from the high school is Lori Vines, who's been a paraprofessional at Waterford High School for close to two decades. And for those of you who don't know exactly what the role of a paraprofessional is, that is a very challenging behind-the-scenes job a lot of times. He was not just a paraprofessional, she was the president of the Paraprofessionals Union. And her job, day in and day out, was working with our most challenging kids and some of our most challenging academic situations. And no matter who we paired her with, what kind of an academic or behavioral challenge she was working with, she always finds ways to connect with kids on a personal level. She's a real team player. She would do whatever was necessary to meet the needs of those kids in her charge. And she really, she assumed a real leadership role in our para-organization. And she will be tremendously missed. She's, she was a remarkable addition to our staff. So congratulations, Lori, on your retirement as well.
Lynn, I think you're the only one on here from the high school, and we'd like to give you an opportunity to say a few words if you so choose. I think you're on mute. You'll probably have to unmute yourself.
I just. There's plenty of times, I'm sure other people wish I was muted more than than tonight. But I want to thank the Board of Education for this very nice surprise honor. And I had a wonderful time at Waterford. The students, many of whom lived on my street, went to school with my own children. And I, that's why I was sort of leaning with a bittersweet, because I'm not done with some of them yet. But it's time, and I will miss you all. You've been wonderful. One of the best administrative teams I've ever worked with. And I just appreciate the opportunity. And Sunshine has been my baby from the first day. From the first day I walked into Waterford High School at that first faculty meeting. So I have to really figure out who's going to have the honor of continuing that. So I'm still thinking as to who I'm going to approach, because I really don't want it to be anybody else's half to do. I want somebody who really is into it as much as I was, because I really enjoyed every administrative day, every happy occasion, and the sad ones too. I always looked for something that was really appropriate. And yes, I know, Andre, I do continue on and on. So thank you all. I appreciate this very much.
Thank you very much. We wish you the best.
Congratulations, Lynn.
Thank you.
We are moving on to also Waterford High School, but within our food service department. And we have our Director of School Dining and Nutrition Services, Diane, who will be here with us tonight? So Diane, I'll let you do the honors, honoring Julie Dugan. I think you need to unmute yourself.
There we go. Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight to recognize some truly amazing people. Although I've been the Waterford School Dining and Nutrition Director, Nutrition Services Director for only a short time, I have had the pleasure of working with Julie Dugan for many years prior. And it is with pride and admiration that we congratulate her on a great milestone in life, retirement. To quote Jamie Oliver, "Cooking is the ultimate giving." And Julie has given us 13 years of dedicated food service at Waterford High School. So as she hangs up her apron for the last time, I would like to share the secret recipe for Julie's success as a valuable employee. It is her passion for the students and staff, the key ingredient being her daily smile. She would greet each and every one as they came through the lunch line. She would. Each day, she served a cup of kindness as she would take the time to listen to students and engage in their conversations, making them feel special and appreciated. She served a pound of patience, producing many fast-paced meals in a short amount of time. She used a pinch of enthusiastic inspiration and creativity as she would always decorate the kitchen for the different seasons and holidays. She added a handful of organization, which no kitchen can operate without. And right before her recipe was complete, she was whisked into the essential role of a true school lunch hero, bravely feeding all the children in our community during a pandemic. So no matter how you slice it, this is truly an unforgettable recipe, but one that she has mastered. It's now her time to savor the memories made here and keep cooking up new ones. So Waterford School Dining and Nutrition Services are all about good food, but we are also about good people. And Julie Dugan is good people. In fact, she's five stars. So as with many recipes that are lost, you will be greatly missed, but we relish, we will relish all the valuable contributions you have made to our program. Today, we celebrate you, and it is with much gratitude that we congratulate you and wish you well. Most of all, we thank you for your service, dedication, and commitment. And there's no better taste than a well-deserved retirement. So enjoy.
Julie, do you want to say a few words? Don't feel pressured to do so. You would have to unmute yourself.
I just want to. Thank you for this honor. Diane, it was a pleasure working with you, and I hope to possibly sub next year, because I'm going to miss you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Excellent, we're going to move on to Clark Lane Middle School and hand it off to Principal Jim Sacks.
Thank you, Mr. Giard. Good evening, everyone. It is my utmost pleasure to speak about our retiree from Clark Lane Middle School, 7th grade mathematics teacher Jane Halliday Randall. Jane has been a teacher in Waterford for 35 glorious years, and she exhibits so many exemplary qualities. And here are a few I'd like to briefly touch upon this evening. Jane's work ethic is second to none. Oftentimes, as I am pulling out of the building around 5 o'clock, Jane's car, replete with ski rack and gear, is still in the lot, and I know she's inside working on her grades, her lessons, or preparing materials for the next day for a special student. Her work ethic also extends to assisting struggling students. She sets the standard for putting herself in the role of a teacher interventionist. She often spends hours each week with student after student seeking her out. If a student is hurting or in need of remediation, Jane is always, and I mean always, there to help. She's also a fantastic collaborator and really enjoys her PLCs. According to her 7th grade colleagues, whenever she was in a meeting and a specific mathematics topic came up, she had an uncanny ability to define exactly when it was taught in the year, where it appeared in the textbook, how it fit the sequence of the curriculum, and how best to teach it. She mastered everything she learned and has a photographic memory on top of it all. Ever the learner, she went to every conference she could go to. In the middle of this most recent pandemic closure, our tech coach put out there that there was a new program called Kami, part of a platform we were using to instruct students at home. Jane took advantage of this and learned it and quickly put it to work to help students. Now Jane was three months out from retirement, and nobody would have been the least bit critical of her had she not attended that seminar and learned a brand-new skill that she would only be using for a few months. But Jane is not about herself, she's about the students. She's always open to new learning techniques and applying them immediately. Jane loves the great outdoors. She has hiked in the past few years through Europe. She loves her skiing and plans to spend a great deal of her time adventuring with her husband. She's a great mom, a devoted daughter, and a unique and faithful friend. Jane will be truly missed by Clark Lane. We love you, Jane, and we wish you the very best in your retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Waterford community and Waterford Public Schools for giving me the opportunity to serve and support my students for all these years. I'm going to miss, day in and day out, the interaction between my students, the faculty, the staff. I love Clark Lane staff. Every morning, I would walk in the door, and Roland would have my door open every morning and ready to start, and I'm going to miss that interaction. I'm going to miss the interaction with administration. And at this time, I know it's time for me to go on and help the community in the Adirondacks where I grew up. And I hope to help them in my near future in Chester Town, New York, as well. So thank you. I appreciate the time that I've spent at Clark Lane and in Waterford Public Schools. Thank you.
Congratulations.
We're going to move over to Great Neck Elementary School and Principal Billy Shea.
Good evening, everyone. And good evening, Teresa. I see you out there, and I believe Mrs. Rare is joined this evening by her husband Dave and daughter Lauren. So welcome. I would like to extend congratulations to Teresa Rare. She has taught in Waterford for the past 20 years, and I know her career spans 35. Her compassion and dedication to the profession has enabled her to positively impact the lives of hundreds of Waterford students. Students continually come back to see her and ask for her and talk about the positive impact that she's had on their lives. Teresa's professionalism and experience has also positively impacted her colleagues, myself included certainly. And I feel really fortunate to have had the opportunity to work alongside her for the past several years. Mrs. Rare, I know, will be greatly missed by colleagues and students alike. So please join me in extending immense gratitude for her service and sincerest congratulations to Mrs. Rare. We will miss you.
Thank you, Billy. Thank you, everyone, for putting this together tonight. Like you said, we've all become very proficient at Zoom in these past couple of months. But thank you for doing it. While I was in Waterford, I taught K 1, 2, 3, and 4, and not in that order, but it gave me a great opportunity to really work with many, many different people. I've worked with many administrators, Billy, Pat, Craig and Tom, it's been a pleasure to work for you in Waterford. And I look forward to many more adventures. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also from Great Neck.
Also from Great.
Professional Kathleen.
I'd like to extend congratulations to Kathy Blon. Kathy devoted her talent and support of many students at Great Neck, and I believe Quaker Hill for a short time as well. She's been with us in the district since 2007. Kathy's kindness, her flexibility, and dedication to the service to all of our students is certainly going to be greatly missed. So on behalf of all of us at Great Neck and Waterford Public Schools, we extend gratitude for Kathy's service and wish her joy and relaxation in retirement.
I don't think Kathy was able to be here tonight. But we honor her service for sure. Last but certainly not least is library assistant at Quaker Hill Elementary School. And I don't believe Heidi was able to be with us tonight, but Principal Chris Descordia did send along some words. He asked me to read about Heidi and her work at Quaker Hill. Heidi was the library assistant for 29 years in the Waterford Public Schools. Heidi's tenure as librarian in the town of Waterford began in September of 1991. She worked for 17 years at Great Neck Elementary School, four years at Clark Lane, and the last eight at Quaker Hill. Over her career, she has positively impacted the lives of thousands of students in the town of Waterford, inspiring a love of reading and unlocking the power of a good book. Heidi was an invaluable member of our school community, always coordinating the special veterans-themed library station for our Veterans Day celebration and running everyone's favorite, the Sandcastle Station at Marine Science Day. On behalf of the students and staff at Quaker Hill School, we would like to thank you for all that you've done over the years. We have dedicated a special bench to you that will remain in the Quaker Hill Library, so you will continue to be a presence in the lives of our students as they settle in to read a good book. We wish you and your family great health and happiness as you embark on this next adventure. You will be missed. Principal Chris Descordia. And again, congratulations to all of our retirees. How about a round of applause, if that's possible? And retirees and families, you are certainly welcome to remain on the rest of the meeting, as it's a public meeting, but we also understand if you choose not to. So congratulations, everyone, and thank you. Prince, Board Chair Craig Merriman, for any closing comments?
Yeah. I just wanted to say congratulations to all of our retirees, and we wish you well in your retirement and hope you have a long and healthy retirement. And the board and the whole community owes you a debt of gratitude for your work and your service to this community. It's been amazing what you've done. And each of you had a significant impact on the students that you've interacted with over the years. And they'll carry those interactions with them through the rest of their lives. And we certainly have some big shoes to fill when you're gone and really appreciate all that you've done for us. So give your time here at Waterford Schools, and you'll definitely be missed. So thank you, thank you so much. And like I say, I hope you guys have a long and healthy retirement. Enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move on to item number three, which is the consent agenda. It's like we have minutes from three meetings, the Food Services Report, monthly expenses, and some transfers. Let me take a motion for that, please. Greg, you're muted. Greg, I'm not sure if you're saying it. Okay, second, please.
Second.
Okay, second from Marcia. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Seems to be no discussion on that, so we'll take it to vote. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? abstained? Okay, motion carries. Next is item number four, it's a correspondence. I don't have anything, I don't know. Tom, do you?
No, nothing major. There was a couple of attachments, a meet-and-confer letter, which the Chair and I sent out to the Board of Finance by statute. They were obligated to meet with them if they so choose prior to commencing negotiations. And then the appointment of Craig Merriman to the Learn Board was one of the major pieces of correspondence.
Thank you. So that will take us to the item five, which is the superintendent's report. Tom?
Sure. Obviously, a little bit on the briefer side, as the school year wrapped up, I want to commend all of our building administrative teams and their staff for doing such a great job organizing promotions and graduation. All went very, as well as they could, given the circumstances. I also want to commend our IT department, particularly Ed Crane and John Whalen, for making all the IT needs, specifically with the high school graduation and streaming and whatnot, possible. Also want to thank a multitude of town departments for their support of promotions and graduations, particularly with the support at Waterford Beach, First Selectman Rob Rule, Chief Mahoney in the Waterford Police Department, Director of Public Works Gary Schneider and his department, Brian Flaherty, Director of Wreckin Park and his department, and Emergency Management Director Steve Sinagra. It would not have been possible without the support of the various town departments. Before I get a little bit into reopening for next year, I do want to thank our entire team for another great school year, albeit extremely challenging. And I do wish our staff, students, and families a safe and enjoyable summer. I do want to spend just a few moments talking about reopening. The Governor and Commissioner of Education held a press conference today at 4 o'clock where they announced, verbally announced, reopening guidance. A written document will be sent to districts next week at some point. But I wanted to hit upon four or five key points. But I wanted to hit upon four or five key points for our families that may be listening tonight. The plan right now, and again, I use the word right now, is to have all kids return to school full-time in August. Uh, that would be grades pre-K to twelve, five days a week in person. Um, obviously, there would be precautions around students and staff wearing masks, masks, uh using social distancing uh to as best as we can was the Governor and Commissioner's words. Um, and in cart really encouraging us to use big spaces for instruction as much as possible, i.e. cafeteria libraries, gymnasiums, auditorium, and spreading kids out as much as possible in the building. Frequent hand washing, of course, cleaning standards and protocols. Um, and really encouraging us at the pre-K to eight level uh to have a focus on what's called cohorting, really keeping a steady group of kids together throughout the school day. So if it's a Mrs. Smith in grade three and she has twenty or twenty-two students, um, those students stay in that same room all day and the specials teachers would rotate in, for example, really keeping that cohort together and not intermingling with other students across the school. And then the other key point I wanted to highlight from the press conference was that any decision to uh scale back in-person education or to close would be determined at the State Department of Public Health level and not not a local superintendent or a local health department. It would be more at the state level. Um, obviously, that uh guidance uh once we receive the written document will be a framework for our district reopening task force. Uh, we will begin uh not begin, we will continue that work earnestly next week and continuing our planning. We did invite all staff uh who wanted to across the districts uh to participate in a subcommittee and thirty-seven staff members from across the district. That's in addition to central office directors and administrators have stepped forward and volunteered to help with this work. So it's encouraging. Uh, so many folks uh want to be involved because uh it it's 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 gonna be a lift, that's for sure. So, Mr. Chair, that's all I had for superintendent's report as we close out one year and and look forward to the next.
Okay, Tom, thank you. Next is item six.
Uh, Tom?
Uh, Craig.
I get every question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Tom, you've you've told us what you've been told. How does that impact us? What are we gonna be doing differently than what we did? Or are we gonna be doing everything the same? What's the impact? What are we gonna do in response to that?
So that's really the re- work of the reopening task force over the next uh month or so. Uh, we will have to submit a plan to the state. There is no leeway on the five days a week in person for every kid. Uh, that is not gonna be a local decision. Every district uh will be required to have every kid in school every day, uh unless Department of Public Health at the state level says otherwise.
Just on that level, Tom, I mean, that's what we did before, right? Before the 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 COVID nineteen crisis, that's that's what we did. So how are things different going forward in terms of what we're gonna be planning to do?
Yeah, so I think that really uh centers around maximizing social distancing as much as we can uh in a school building. That means eliminating or removing all unnecessary furniture in classrooms, uh i.e. bookshelves, for example, and really spreading kids out within classrooms. It will mean masks the majority, if not the entire day, frequent hand washing. It will mean, as I mentioned, particularly pre-K to eight, the idea of cohorting where kids are as much as possible in a singular location throughout the day, and it's the adults who would rotate in versus kids traveling in the hallways. Um, it 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 will be uh it will be challenging. It will be utilizing big spaces such as gymnasiums for classroom space, perhaps cafeterias. Uh, I don't envision kids necessarily eating in the cafeteria. I, you know, there's some logistics to work through in regards to recess. Uh, specials, obviously, there'll be a separate guidance document in the coming weeks out around specials such as art and music and PE and things of that nature. Um, so it's uh, you know, it's it's gonna be a challenge to within the clean, there'll be enhanced cleaning protocols with Mr. Minor and his department will have to follow. Uh, similar guidelines will be in place for buses. Um, they are backing off some of the strictness of buses that they've put in place for the summer as we head towards fall. Again, this is all right now. If things spiked in Connecticut, we could be in a different situation, but again, without having seen the hundred-page written guidance, it's hard to envision uh, you know.
Right, and that was my point. I don't, I'm not at all critical of you and your response at all. I think it's an accurate response, but it just seems so nebulous. That, I, I don't really have a sense of what we're gonna do.
Well, we have to submit a a plan to the state by the end of July, which we will. So uh as we work through that process, we will keep the board apprised.
You know, it's just very vacuous as to what we should be doing. One fellow's opinion, so I I wish you well and I I don't envy you.
Thanks for the vote of confidence.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, um, anyone else with any questions, any thoughts?
Is there um guidance on a Plan B? Uh, if this changes in the next few months, the trajectory of this um, you know, situation, is there guidance on that? Are you doing the two plans simultaneously?
Yeah, great question, Michelle. So the state has asked us to really plan three models of education, full in-person, every kid's in every day, plan for a hybrid approach where some kids might be in, some kids might be out, and then full distance learning. And my understanding from the press conference is each community will be rated on a scale of green to red with orange and yellow in between. And depending on what level you're on, that will dictate the number of kids in in capacity you can have in a building as well as how many days a week kids would come in. So we really need to plan three scenarios, full five days a week in, full five days a week out, and everything in between. So it's a great question.
Financial assistance, any in terms of the mask uh that would be required? Any, any indication from the state about that? How are they gonna be paid for?
Um, it's a great question. Uh, that was asked at the press conference. Uh, the governor indicated there could be some limited funds. Obviously, we have the CARES Act funding. Mr. Powers is leading our grant application for that. I would imagine PPE purchases would be part of that. Certainly, last meeting, the board authorized uh, you know, some purchases around PPE. Um, you know, there's other bills stuck in Washington right now. If those came through, those would be significant, but I don't, I see limited state funding and the remainder being at the local level as of right now.
Does that put us at any risk in terms of being able to meet those obligations in terms of our current appropriations?
I'll defer to our finance director on that. I would say depending on conditions and how this transpires, we very well could be in jeopardy, but it's too early to really tell. But Joe.
Yeah, it's definitely too early to tell uh what the overall implication of this is. Uh, just to touch on a couple of points, at the last meeting, we approved fifty thousand uh for PPNA. We spent about twenty thousand so far in Plexiglas. Uh, when I get back uh to Connecticut on Monday, we'll uh put in some sort of purchase order for masks or whatever. Are going back to order financing with a revised uh plan for a that's gonna create that rollover account. Um, the rollover account's gonna, the language right now looks like it allocates about half of whatever our end-of-year favorability is. For us to be able to act, be able to access this list for items like COVID nineteen. Um, right now, our end-of-year balance is gonna be greater than five hundred thousand. So if the plan goes forward as submitted, that would mean we'd have about two hundred and fifty thousand at our hands for next year.
Thank you, Joe.
Any, anything else? Also, just a reminder, if you're, if you could mute, please, there's some some background noise. There we go. Thank you. Right, and we'd have to consider to all the additional cleaning costs for cleaning and and things like that. That's been ongoing anyway, but continuing. Okay. So if there's nothing else, we can move on to committee and other reports. Are there any committee reports?
Uh, Greg, on policy, uh, we continue to move forward uh in terms of the best practices. Uh, Craig is gonna summarize. I don't want to repeat everything, but basically, we're just trying to bring ourselves current and and conform to the the new directions that the legislature and our society gives us, so.
Right. I think that was the only committee meeting we had. Um, how about any liaisons? I I had a learn meeting. I don't, I don't think I talked about it at the last meeting. It was basically an end-of-the-year uh wrap-up. About a three-hour meeting to uh just go through what what Learn had accomplished throughout the year and talk about compensation for the director, things of that nature, a lot of financial stuff.
Can you tell me who is the current director of Learn?
I'm sorry?
You're talking about Learn, correct? Did you just say Learn? Who is the current director?
Oh, goodness, um.
Sorry. It's who?
Kate Erickson.
Hey, Kate Erickson.
Hey.
That was my first learn meeting in in quite a while and and we we found a replacement for me if uh we, we can do that another time. So I think that's it on that, on uh item six. Next would be item seven, which is uh some policies. And uh, what, Craig, if you'd like to take that, please?
Uh, sure, thank you. So uh, this would be the second reading uh of um oh, of uh the new uh policy, uh three, two, one, four, the new code of conduct for child nutrition. Uh, policy uh five, two, three, oh, transportation. Policy five, six, five, zero, six, zero, uh, students with special healthcare needs and uh policy six thousand online uh credit uh or credit for online courses. So um, we went through them at the first meeting. If uh the board has additional questions, I'll uh try to answer those and we are seeking approval tonight of uh those remaining for policies.
Okay, um, I I'll take a motion for that, please.
Greg, I move that the uh Board of Ed approved policy three, two, four, oh, code of conduct, child nutrition programs, policy five, oh, six, oh, fluoridologies and or like system diseased, policy five, two, three, oh, transportation, policy six thousand, credit for online courses as presented.
And a couple people there, um. Try that again, who who seconded?
I did. This is Deb.
Thank you, Deb. Any discussion?
I think it's pretty straightforward. And it's just complying to state standards.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we will take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries unanimously. Next is uh textbook review or textbook materials for the new AP Government course.
Uh, thank you, yes. So at the last meeting, uh, we introduced uh that there'll be a new AP Government course. Uh, the textbook that we're going is what the College Board recommends, which is uh American Government Stories of a Nation. So uh, we're seeking uh approval of uh that book. And in my uh memo to everyone, there was some uh online links uh to that um without being in person to show you the book.
Would you like to have a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I move that the Waterford Board of Education improves and adopts the instructional resources to support the Waterford High School AP Government and Politics course. Second, Pat Feodor.
Thank you, Pat. Any discussion?
Uh, the only concern, if I may, Mr. Merriman? Concern I have is I've gotten a couple of phone calls regarding the Black Lives Matter protests and all that sort of stuff and um I noted that this course incorporates some of that, but I recall in my education, I learned about a lot of the stuff that is coming out in today's, and of course, it was a long time ago, uh in today's curriculum. Um, so this course almost is like it's built to incorporate some of those issues that um were talked about at the protests and and different things. Are we taking, is it amendable? Is this a, you know, are we kind of still building on it? Or what is, i- is it a set-in-stone curriculum? Or how how does it work?
Yeah, so um, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair.
Please.
On um, the six through twelve social studies curriculum is currently under a renewal. Um, with uh, with the distance learning gap, we've had to put us a little bit of pause on that, but uh, I would anticipate that um, you know, by the end of next school year, at a minimum, we have to approve a a course in um Latino uh history as required. Uh, our social studies committee will be uh looking at uh how to make relevant um the various courses and uh when we're ready for a full curriculum adoption, uh, you'll see the the full curriculum for all the courses. This particular course, to answer your question, Marsha, uh, really has a open sequence defined by the College Board, so it's not that pliable uh because you're really trying to teach for the College Board credit. With that being said, that's one course within a a program of studies of a a lot of courses within the Social Studies Department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
So, I'm sorry, the other um social studies curriculums are being reviewed and we'll look for um areas that we can improve on those um top topics of racial inequality or historical um the historic history that's being taught, um perspectives. Uh, you're saying that it's all being reviewed now?
So the entire social study uh started a review process last spring. It's a two-year process, so uh they were in the looking at all of the courses, uh what courses need refinement, what courses uh can we add? This happens to be one that we're adding and because um of uh the timing, uh we kind of offer it to students next school year, so that's why we're moving up this approval more than the the rest of the six through twelve uh work. There will be new courses in Hispanic culture uh that um required as well. So uh, the whole, you know, social studies program six to twelve is under curriculum renewal and uh we'll be bringing the board um, you know, those refinements when when we finish uh, you know, hopefully the end of uh next school. you know, hopefully, the end of next school year for some next school year and some in the fall of the previous year because of this break of time over COVID.
And is that all Waterford staff that's on those committees? Are there outside? Do we have outside consultants? Or are they, is that committee made up of Waterford staff?
So many that's working on it are teachers in that department. And I know our high school department head is also working with the state social studies consultant in some of those refinements.
Yeah, I'll speak to this also a little bit. So then I don't want to get too far off the agenda item, but to answer your question, so I'm going to expand on what Craig mentioned. Actually, the, the course that we'll be bringing forward next year is actually Black and Latino Studies. That was the legislation that was passed. So that will be a required course to be offered in every high school in Connecticut, including Waterford High School. In addition to that, we actually had an administrative team this morning centered around the concepts of diversity, bias, race, and whatnot. And looking at, one segment of our work would be looking at our curriculums and course, course offerings within that context. And I would envision engaging consultants in that work as we do, say, what's called an equity audit in terms of our curriculum and course offerings. So I know it's a little bit off, but I wanted to address your question.
Thank you. That was looking for.
Greg? Yeah, unmute, please. Greg, you're muted. There you go. Oh, no, you're muted again.
Okay, it's so important that our students be aware of what a diverse population we are and how important it is to understand that everybody comes to the table with the same viewpoint and how to understand people that come to the table with a different viewpoint and where they come from, in a word, diversity. And that's very important. At the same time, it's very important to understand the importance of political thought and that there's diversity of opinion, how people view any different situation. And the right of each student, each citizen in this country to express their own views, to be listened to, not shouted down, and to be tolerated, and to have those views respectfully discussed. So we hope that a new curriculum changes that we do, that we emphasize the importance of political diversity and respectful
Thank you. And a little bit of that got broken up, but I think we caught the gist of most of that. And I think it dovetails nicely with our vision of the graduate work over the last 10 months and the performance indicators around that, around cultural competency and you're breaking up, Greg. We, we really can't make it out.
Yep. Okay, is there any other discussion on this at all?
I, I don't want to take up the agenda, but I was wondering if there was going to be a larger discussion about this at some point. You know, so the board is aware of what's going on and, you know, address some, hear some of the concerns, address some of the current concerns, and is aware of what's going on from the school's perspective because you know that, you know, I haven't heard, I haven't heard much. I mean, thank you very much for sending something out, Tom. I appreciate it. But I do think it needs some time, you know, on an agenda or a meeting, a future meeting that we can have at some point.
True. As I said, we met this morning as an administrative team around the idea of forming a district diversity committee. I'm not sure what we'll call it, but for right now, that, that would include parents as well, you know, and, and getting their perspectives. I have heard from a, a good number of parents over the last couple of weeks about, you know, everything that is going on and, and what's the nexus to our school district and what can we do? So as, as we ramp up this work, I think it will be vital to have the board on, on board because it ultimately could affect policy and obviously curricular implementations and resource materials and things of that. So as, as we work on this, I just, again, I ask people to be patient as well because we're also trying to reopen schools in the context of COVID. So the pace probably won't be as fast as what people want. But as I said, we met this morning to discuss this very topic. So your, your point is well taken, and thank you.
Anyone else that, like that, any? Just a reminder to mute, if you could, please, if you're not speaking. Okay, then, not hearing any further discussion on this, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstained? Okay, carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have, session, if someone would like to make that motion for us, please.
I'll make a motion that the Waterford Board of Education moves into executive session at, what time is it? Anybody got the time?
7:01.
Yep.
7:01, and invites Mr. Giard for the purpose of discussion concerning an agreement between the Waterford Board of Education and the Waterford Local 1303-209 of Council Number Four, ASME Para Professionals, July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2021, and the Superintendent's Evaluation and Contract of Employment.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And we are going into executive session.
We are live.
Thank you, Tom. So we're back from executive session, and we have two items. Scroll down there so I can get to them. And there being section nine under new business. The first is possible action on the agreement between the Waterford Board of Education and Waterford Local 1303-29 of Council Number Four, the Paraprofessionals Union for their contract for July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021.
I move that the Waterford Board of Education ratifies and approves the agreement between the Waterford Board of Education and the Waterford Local 1303-209, Council Number Four, AFSCME, Para Professionals, July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2021.
Second, Amanda Gates-Fleming.
Okay, thank you, Marcia, with the motion and the second. Any discussion? Okay, then we'll, we'll take it to a vote from here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Next is the, sorry, the possible action on a superintendent's contract of employment.
I'd like to move that the Waterford Board of Education authorizes the board chair to renew the contract with superintendent of schools for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023, including a 1.5% base salary increase and 25 to 28, an increase of 25 to 28 days of vacation for the year 2021, and authorizes the board chair to sign the superintendent's contract according to the terms and conditions as discussed.
Just a question, Marcia, on your motion. You're increasing the vacation time from 25 days to 28 days, not an increase of from 25 to 28 days.
Whatever you said. I thought that's what I said.
And the 1.5 is for, for a one-year increase as well.
And so the, the vacation time would be 28 days, effectively a three-day increase over the prior benefit.
Correct.
Second, Amanda Gates-Fleming.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing known? None? Take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That leaves us with adjournment.
So move. Second.
Amanda, enjoy.
Yes, that's Joy, second. Yes, yes.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everyone. Stay safe.
Bye-bye.